Everyone, I'd like to call our meeting to order and welcome everyone to tonight's November 18th, 2025 City Council meeting. We would ask that you please silence all electronic devices. At this time, I'm going to ask you that you join me in the invocation. Dear Lord, as we gather together this evening, Father, we find ourselves in the midst of fall, and Lord, we find ourselves on the cusp of Thanksgiving. This is the time of year for all of us to reflect and give thanks. Lord, sometimes our attention goes to the things that we may be missing in life, the things that we are void of, but at this time, at this special time of year, I pray with a thankful heart, God, that our focus is on the things that you have provided us all. We thank you for our city staff and for their efforts to provide the key and critical services that our citizens need each day. Lord, we thank you for our abundance of resources, our thriving economy, and Father, we thank you for the quality of life that we enjoy in Burlington. And Lord, for those with special needs this holiday season, we ask and we pray for your love, your mercy, your grace, and your blessings. The needs are great, but Father, we know you are the great provider. Please bless this council. Give us your knowledge and your wisdom from above to conduct our work this evening in a manner that is pleasing to you. In your name I pray. Amen. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda this evening is a couple of special recognitions. First, I'd like to recognize a special group we have joined this night. We've got Boy Scout Troop 17, sponsored by First Presbyterian Church. They're with us observing tonight's meeting in order to obtain their Communication Merit Badge, so this is a requirement for the distinction of Eagle Scout, and I know because I had two boys in Troop 17 with Eagle Scouts. So, welcome. We're glad you all are here. Let's give them a round of applause. And downstairs in overflow, we've got Maggie Massey and our Burlington Youth Council from Thataways, and they're joining us this evening as well, so we can wave to Maggie and them, and we wish them the best. Next on the agenda this evening is a proclamation for Small Business Saturday, which is November 29th, 2025. At this time, I'd like to recognize our downtown manager, Maggie Hogan. Good evening, Maggie. You want to tell us a little bit about Small Business Saturday, and then we'll do our proclamation?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. On behalf of the Burlington Downtown Corporation, I want to thank you for recognizing Small Business Saturday, which will take place this year on November 29th. Small Business Saturday is a national initiative founded by the American Express and officially co-sponsored by the U.S. Small Business Administration. Since its launch, Small Business Saturday has helped to bring communities together by encouraging shoppers to support their locally owned businesses during this holiday season. In 2024 alone, shoppers spent an estimated $22 billion at small businesses on this day, contributing to more than $223 billion in reported spending nationwide since tracking in 2010. And now, more than ever, small businesses in downtown Burlington rely on this kind of community support. They serve as the backbone for our local communities, creating jobs, shaping the character of our communities, and contributing to a vibrant and welcoming downtown. This year, we'll be offering downtown passports to celebrate and contribute to shopping small. Visitors can pick up passports at participating businesses on November 29th, collect stamps for purchases at three or more downtown locations, and be entered into a raffle to win $100 in downtown dollars. Furthermore, a couple of years ago, we aligned our downtown Christmas tree lighting with Small Business Saturday to help generate additional foot traffic and bring more families into our local shops. The tree lighting will take place from 4:00 to 6:00 with the tree lighting being at 5:30 and will include live music and dance performances, children's activities, pictures of Santa Claus, and more. The drawing for downtown dollars will be during this event, and we invite all residents and each of you to join us downtown on November 29th as we pick off the holiday season together and support small businesses that make downtown Burlington so unique.
Thank you. We have a proclamation recognizing Small Business Saturday, the City of Burlington, North Carolina proclamation, Small Business Saturday, November 29th, 2025, where as the city of Burlington, North Carolina celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 34.7 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 61.1% of net new jobs created since 1995, and small businesses employ 45.9% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas 68 cents of every dollar spent at small businesses in the U.S. stays in the local community, and every dollar spent at small businesses creates an additional 48 cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas a high percentage of U.S. consumers aware of Small Business Saturday shopped or ate at a small, independently owned retailer or restaurant on previous Small Business Saturdays. And whereas the city of Burlington, North Carolina supports our local businesses that creates jobs, boosts our local economy, and preserves our communities, and whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Mayor Jim Butler, and the Burlington City Council hereby proclaim Saturday, November 29th, 2025, as Small Business Saturday in the city of Burlington, and we urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Let's give our small businesses a round of applause. Our next item on the agenda this evening is Code of Ethics disclosing any conflicts of interest. At this time, we'll recognize City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Ladies and council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
None. Thank you. Our next item is the approval of minutes from October 6th, 2025 work session, October 7th, 2025 city council meeting, October 21st, 2025 city council meeting, and October 22nd, 2025 special meeting. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes are approved. Next, we've had a couple of requests for items to be added to the agenda this evening. Consent agenda items requested, we heard last night, Item K, to award a bid to Hamlet Associates for the Maynard Aquatic Center. Item L, Western Sportsplex pre-construction services agreement with Bobbit Construction, Inc. Item M, resolution scheduling a public hearing for annexation of 1201 and 1211 NC Highway 61 South. Item N, voluntary non-contiguous annexation request, 997 North NC Highway 87. And then a new business item this evening, Item 4, is December 2nd, 2025 city council meeting location decision. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the requests for those additions.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and approval and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those items are added. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with those add-ons.
Motion to approve with the additions.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we'll move to the consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item A, to adopt a resolution and authorize the fire chief to execute an equipment donation agreement with the Alamance Community College pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168-274 for the donation of a surplus equipment, including one Ford F-250 pickup truck for use in the Fire Academy program to support training exercises. Item B, to temporarily close a portion of city parking lot number one at the corner of Spring Street and Front Street from mid-November 2025 to early January 2026 for downtown holiday tree installation. Item C, to approve a temporary street closure in downtown Burlington for the Burlington Recreation and Parks Department to host the Holiday Magic Special Event on Saturday, September or December 13th, 2025, during the specified times at the following locations. Street closures from 1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., Main Street from Davis Street to Front Street. Spring Street from Davis Street to Webb Avenue, closure at lot number one access. Front Street from Worth Street to Lexington Avenue, closure at lot number two access. Street closures from 2:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m., Davis Street from Main Street to Spring Street. Item D, to authorize the IT department to proceed with the application for the fiscal year 2025 state and local cybersecurity grant program. Item E, to approve the Burlington Arboretum at Willowbrook Park Phase II Master Plan. Item F, to authorize the city manager to execute renewal of the agreement to operate the Burlington Animal Services Pet Adoption and Resource Center with the Alamance County, the Town of Elon, Town of Gibsonville, City of Graham, Town of Green Level, Town of Hall River, City of Meben, Town of Oscepee, Town of Sweptsville, and the Village of Alamance. Item G, to approve the following new positions in animal services effective January 1st, 2026. Two veterinary care specialist positions, pay grade 206. One pet care and enrichment specialist, pay grade 202. Item H, to approve budget amendment 2026-13 for Recreation and Parks to allocate grant funds awarded by the Piedmont Triad Regional Council for Carnotile Senior Center program and supplies. Item I, to approve budget amendment 2026-14 for the Recreation and Parks to allocate grant funds awarded by the North Carolina Department of Insurance Division of Senior's Health Insurance Information Program. Item J, to approve budget amendment 2026-15 for Burlington Animal Services to recognize the increased expenditures and revenue associated with the increased spay and neuter capacity. Item K, to award a bid in the amount of $5,664,057 to Hamlet and Associates for the construction of a permanent enclosure for the Maynard Aquatic Center and to authorize the city manager to execute the contract after the GeoBond Series 2025-C sale on December 2nd, 2025, upon approval by the city attorney and chief financial officer. Item L, to award a contract to Bobbit Construction, Inc. for the specified pre-construction services for the Western Sportsplex in the amount not to exceed, and someone please help me with that amount.
That's up, Mr. Brink.
I don't feel like we need to be spending $278 million.
This is not the federal budget.
Bobbit does not get discussion.
Take out one of the zeros and add a dot. My gosh.
So $278,150?
You see why I print some Bobbit is just smiling back there.
They were reading that all the way to the bank, weren't they? And to authorize the city manager to execute the contract upon approval by the city attorney and chief financial officer. I'm glad I don't have to sign that one. Item M, to adopt a resolution to set a date of public hearing for January 2nd, 2026 for city council to consider the annexation of 1201 and 1211 NC Highway 61 South. And Item N, to defer city council's public hearing in consideration of the applicant's petition for annexation for 997 North NC Highway 87, parcel ID 117373, to a future time pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 160D-202 Burlington City Code Section 4040. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. We're going to move into public hearings this evening. We do have two public hearings. During each public hearing, if you have an interest in speaking during that specific action item, you will have an opportunity. Public hearing number one, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider adopting a resolution pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168-272 authorizing the lease of surplus real property to Burlington Baseball Club, Inc. At this time, we'll recognize Assistant City Manager Rachel Kelly. Good evening, Rachel.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. Tonight, we have before you a request for public hearing to consider authorizing a lease with Burlington Baseball, Inc. that manages the Sock Puppets at Burlington Athletic Stadium that has been advertised for 30 days and more per statute to let the community know about the conditions of that contract. With us tonight, we have Anderson Rothbahn in the back. General manager of the Sock Puppets. For any questions you may have, they've been operating out of the Burlington Athletic Stadium for five years now, very successfully, and we've been leasing the Burlington Athletic Stadium to Burlington Baseball, Inc. since the mid-'80s. So, if you have any questions, myself or Anderson or Tony, we'd be glad to answer those.
And we had to review during a work session on this particular item. There's been no substantive changes to the agreement based on what I've seen. Any questions for staff on this particular item? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so we will open the floor for public comments on item one, on this item. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on this topic? Is there anyone on this side that would like to speak on this topic? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Wall and a second by Mayor Protem Owen. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our public hearing is closed. If there's no other questions for city staff, we'll entertain a motion on the resolution
Mayor, I make a motion to adopt a resolution pursuant to NCGS 168-272 authorizing the lease of surplus real property to Burlington Baseball Club, Inc.
We have a motion for approval to adopt the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That item is approved, and thank you, Anderson, for the Sock Puppets and all of the events that they bring to our community. We're greatly appreciative of that. Item two, a public hearing has been continued to consider a request to amend the existing conditional business CB 902 zoning district to include parcel ID numbers 112514, 112515. These properties addressed as 3330 Garden Road and 815 Boone Station Drive, total 3.231 acres in size. At this time, we will recognize Executive Director of Planning and Development Services, Jamie Lawson. Good evening, Jamie.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This item was actually continued from your October city council date, but I'll just go over it again for your information and for members of the public. This is a request for an amendment to an existing conditional business rezoning. There are two properties that total just over three acres in size. They are located on the south side of Garden Road, abutting Boone Station Drive, and I'm circling around them with my mouse now. One of the properties is currently zoned office and institutional. The other is zoned conditional business that coincides with the conditional business zoning associated with Alamance Crossing. So the proposal is to add the O and I, that blue shade property, into the conditional business zoning of Alamance Crossing as well as the CB 831 property that's on Garden Road. The property is currently vacant. The future land use designation for this area is regional commercial, so this rezoning does coincide with that request, and staff finds it is consistent with the land use designation. You'll see the map here on the right that has shades of red. That coincides with the regional commercial land use category. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend this unanimously at their September 22nd meeting, and staff recommends approval consistent with option number one found in your consistency statement sheet. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, and I believe there's a representative from the applicant and the audience as well.
Mr. Brown, would you like to say a few words on this topic?
Mayor, everybody. For the record, I'm Lawson Brown, running Rothbahn by 22 South Lexington Avenue, Burlington across the street. I will preface my remarks by complimenting this council on the selection of your new city manager. Excellent selection, great history with the city, and will be a pleasure to work with. Also, I would like to thank Jamie and her staff, Miss Lawson, for her work on this particular project. As she indicated, this is part of the original 150 acres of the CBL development that I worked on with Mr. Owen, who is now city manager, 150 acres, 65 sellers at that time, and this was a great project for the city of Burlington to extend the Boone Station Drive to the present status. It's my pleasure to be representing Parks Hospitality out of Raleigh, a great hotel developer, and we have worked specifically since the first part of the year. Schmidt Hotel is here from their corporate offices, principal in Parks Hospitality, as well as Chef Mason and Connor Rustybrook. If there are questions, then I cannot answer. I think it's important to note that this is really just a logical extension of existing zoning, and we have limited it to the hotel use so that you don't, it's not a conditional zoning in the sense that you've got a specific site plan, but it is specific in that it can only be used for hotels. Anything that we present going forward is subject to final review and approval, assuming that you all approve this request tonight. The use condition is for a hotel. The subject parcels are going to be subject to the development conditions that are stated in the unified development ordinance, so there won't be any issues with that. This is part of the Alamance Crossing. The previous amendments of that zoning from the early 2000s were June 7, 2005, July 19, 2005, April 18, 2006, June 20, 2006, September 10, 2006. So this is just another modification of the existing zoning. Since Alamance Crossing was built, there have been a number of changes in that neighborhood. Garden Road is the subject of DOT project focus, and the developer, we had a neighborhood meeting, as we always do with requests, that we break before you. At that neighborhood meeting, we had one person appear, and they suggested that we modify the access point further away from Garden Road after working with Chad Houghman, a local engineer, as well as with Lanning Kemp and Associates. The changes were made. Staff has looked at our conceptual plan and has filed that Mr. Dunn, on behalf of the city, and Mr. Edwards, on behalf of the North Carolina Department of Transportation, have both endorsed what the access point should be. That said, we also went to the Planning and Zoning Commission, as required by the UVO, as required by chapter 160D, and as recited by Miss Lawson, there was an unanimous vote to endorse this. I think the last time I was here, there was a staff recommendation for the project I was representing, I don't recall which one it was, and there was also an unanimous vote by the Planning Commission. So I feel twice blessed within the last 12 months to be before you with those two recommendations. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I don't want to belabor this. It's very well set forth in your package, which all of you, you're very familiar with this property, having been by Garden Road, Boone Station Drive over the years. In terms of zoning principles, it's one logical extension of existing zoning for the hotel use. It is consistent with the long-range plan for the city of Burlington, as Miss Lawson has indicated. has indicated. It has total staff support and has a unanimous vote of Planning and Zoning Commission. And I thank, not to belabor again, revenue he was sold with, as Mr. Shakespeare said. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and those I can. I'm sure that Mr. Mason Hustonburg or Patel can answer those, and certainly appreciate your time and attention to this.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Brown? Timmy, I know when we were in the work session, we had some conversation about ingress egress. Can you walk through that, just so everyone's on council's rule clear?
Yes, so what you're seeing here is a conceptual plan that's been included as part of this rezoning request. And again, there'll be a further review by the Technical Review Committee, but currently there is, I believe it's right-in and right-out only on Garden Road, where I'm circling, and then there would be a secondary main entrance coming off of the roundabout.
Any questions or thoughts for Jamie or Mr. Brown? Okay.
I'd like to say something really quickly. Lawson mentioned this in 2005. This was a kind of groundbreaking move for this city, to get this kind of commercial development, where it's located at. And it really set the stage for the additional substantial growth to the western part of the city, and now basically to the northwestern part, as we're going to Gilford County. It expanded the city limits immensely. It provided a facility that this city didn't have, that at some point in time could be compared to some others in Raleigh and Greensboro, very close. There's an substantial amount of revenue, of money invested in this by the private sector. This was not public sector money. And the tax base has benefited from it, as also by sales tax now. So it's one of the finer projects that we're able to pull off, and it only really generates more interest as you can be able to expand it as our community grows in that particular direction.
Okay, thank you for that. Mr. Brown, if we have any other questions, we may call on you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so at this time, we will open the floor for public comments on this particular request. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on this item that's been proposed? Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion approved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our public hearing is closed. Moving on to the matter, I know we've all been briefed on this at a work session. I think everyone's had a chance to discuss it with staff, and we've seen kind of the preliminary layout this evening. If there's no questions from council or no other questions of the applicant or staff, we'll entertain a motion on the request as stated on option one of your yellow sheet.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the request to amend the existing conditional business CB 902 associated with Alamance Crossing, Chalkin Center, to include Alamance County tax identification numbers 112-514 and 112-515. These properties are addressed as 3330 Garden Road and 815 Boone Station Road. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan, in that the future land use map in Section 4 Land Use of a Comprehensive Plan calls for this area to have regional commercial. Hotel uses are currently permitted within existing conditional business CB 902 and general business GB zoning districts. The action is reasonable and in the public interest, in that consolidated parcels 112 and 514 and 112-515 into one zoning district provides an opportunity for more efficient site layout and better site access. It also ensures at least 100 feet between adjoining residentially zoned lot parcel ID 112-15 to the proposed hotel building. Future development of the properties will require TRC review and approval.
So we have motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item is approved. Thank you, Mr. Brown, for being with us this evening.
Mayor, it's all mine. I certainly appreciate your service, Mr. Wall's service, and Mr. Owen's service, as do all the citizens of Burlington, and we wish you very well, and thank you again for what you've done for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item this evening, moving to new business. We'll let the room clear out here just a little bit. Moving to new business this evening, item three. City Council will consider adopting a resolution of support for North Carolina Department of Transportation Infrastructure Improvements to the Project Titan site. At this time, we'll recognize Economic Development Director, Adam Scholl. Good evening, Adam.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Very excited to bring this before you this evening. This is for you to consider a resolution of support for NC DOT infrastructure improvements at Highway 61 in support of Project Titan. You may remember that one, October 22. A whole delay is announced. It will invest $860 million in a new distribution and logistics campus in the Guilford County section of the city of Burlington, supporting 505 new jobs to our area, and supporting the company's grocery brands, including Food Lion. So as a reminder, this is to voice the city's support for NC DOT's eventual approval at their own board of incentives and infrastructure improvements. Those include up to $1,777,500 towards road widening, turn lanes, and installation of two signals. This includes adding a right turn lane on the I-40, I-85 northbound exit ramp, as well as some signal modifications, and an installation of a left turn lane on the I-40, I-85 southbound exit ramp. So we kind of call and evidence support for improvements to safety for people traveling the area, and then also in support of economic development activities in a key growth corridor of the city. Happy to answer any questions, but again, just recommend voicing the city's support for these improvements.
Perfect. Any questions for Adam on this item? This was part of the overall incentive strategy to get this project, Project Titan, so thank you, Adam, for all of your work. If there's no questions or comments on that, we'll entertain a motion for the request to adopt the resolution.
I make a motion to adopt a resolution of support for NC DOT infrastructure improvements of up to $1,777,500 at the Project Titan site off of Highway 61 in the Guilford County section of the city of Burlington.
We have a motion to adopt the resolution. We have a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item is approved, and thanks to everyone for all of their work on that. It's nice to have a resolution that we don't have to write a check on, so that's a good one. Item four. City Council will discuss the location of the December 2, 2025 City Council meeting. This was an item that was discussed during our work session last evening, so at this time, I'm going to open the discussion amongst council members. I know as we left it, there was some conversation around staff working it in stages in council chambers. There was some conversation doing something off-site. There were some limitations to some of those. I believe everyone's been provided some option sheets. I think everyone has those. I think we were going to check on occasions as well. So at this time, we'll open the floor for conversations on this, if everyone's had a chance to look over it.
Mr. Mayor, is it possible to follow up with the questions that we asked last night about occasions? And the second one was...
Impact Alamance?
Yes. So what were the findings?
Mr. Mayor and council, we checked with Tracy Grazer with Impact Alamance and confirmed that their charter and rules prohibit any kind of political affiliation with owning an event there, even though it's a nonpartisan board, that their attorney's opinion, that included this meeting, so that why that's not an option.
Okay.
We looked at the occasions. Staff went and viewed the site today. It would be available on December 2. They're open for business until 2:00 p.m., and we need an additional hour to clean up and whatnot. You could have access beginning at 3:00 p.m. The cost per hour is $300 per hour, which for about a six-hour time slot would be $1,800. The capacity is 350 people. They have tables, chairs, and whatnot, lighting. We would need to, as with any off-site location, bring in the audiovisual screaming equipment, microphones, and whatnot. We did get an updated cost from the vendor. That would be $3,150.
How much?
$3,150.
And that was for off-site?
Yes. And that would be at any of the off-site options, pretty much that same vendor instead of...
Except for Cummings.
Except for Cummings.
Still $2,000. Still $2,000.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I received several calls today about, they're still having the discussion about wanting to have it at Cummings. And if we can have our part here, open the meeting and close the meeting, then I think it would be feasible for the group to be able to go to Cummings and open the meeting there and go from there, meaning that new people are sworn in, new mayor, council member, so forth.
So we have our meeting here, and then the organizational meeting of the new council would be at Cummings?
That is correct.
David, how would that work?
In light of last night's discussion, I did a little scratching around. In your city charter, it seems to provide for just that sort of thing. What I would say to you is, I think that you would need to instruct the clerk that you're going to be getting together, call the meeting, the existing council in here, address old business that exists in front of you that evening, and then turn around and you can close that meeting. We would have a go-ahead and close to the time that we, you have to give 48 hours' notice under for a special meeting of the city council, and that would be something you can do. Are you talking about either off-site, Cummings or here?
Have to be done either way.
Either way. And you could then turn around and go over there and have the organizational meeting for the new city council, and they can address any new business that has come in.
Once they're sworn in.
Yes, once they're sworn in.
Does that mean that Bob or Dewana has to open that meeting?
No, I tell you, I've looked at this in the charter provision that we have addressed as the organizational meeting. It says, "The organization of the city council shall take place notwithstanding the absence, death, refusal to serve, or non-election of one or more members, provided that at least three of the persons entitled to be members are present and, if necessary, taken." So I think this legislature, when they approved this charter for us and this provision, had that in mind, so that they can go over and start the meeting, be sworn in from the very beginning, and go forward with their business.
Mr. Mayor, I think that's just a win for all parties in doing it that way.
I certainly don't have a problem with that at all. I think there's an obligation to have a meeting in the central location, and City Hall, obviously being our normal meeting place. We went in 2021 to the Paramount, which is a city-owned facility just a couple of blocks away, which made it easy. That was, to my eyes, it was the first time ever.
Right.
And then we did it again in '23. So, and it's just unfortunate, or fortunate, but unfortunate, given the circumstances that that's under construction and there's nothing else available. So I mean, I would be satisfied with that. I would love to be here.
Yeah.
And then if the organizational meeting wants to be in some other location, and that is...
And that's the information that I've received. Maybe you guys have received different information.
Prior to today, I'd not been contacted personally by any of the newly elected individuals requesting this. So I did speak to one today, and I got a voicemail from another.
I spoke to one and another, but I had a voicemail from one.
So, and you know, their request was for Cummings, and I respect that. If that's acceptable, would that be acceptable to council?
Well, you know, really, to be perfectly honest, you know, that seemed to be, you know, a way this could be worked out. I think we all agree that we need more room, you know, and if we need more room...
We needed more room tonight.
Yeah, we really do. And so having said that, you know, and also another factor here that's entered into it is it looks like the occasion is going to be 5,000.
Yeah.
And Cummings is going to be 2,000. So really, you know, if the council's ready, I'm ready to put it in a form of a motion where you could actually adopt it, and that way it would be official. David, there's one thing that I thought about, actually at the end of, if we do the bifurcation as proposed, you could actually adjourn it to a time certain at Cummings, right?
You could, but out of an abundance of caution, I was going the special meeting route. But yes, I think you could do that and do the same.
In other words, but what I'm thinking about the special meeting is you got that 48-hour thing. We still could do that.
Yes.
But, you know, when would we authorize that? Authorize it to be published on the Friday before?
Well, with 48 hours' notice is what is required. Obviously, you have to state what the purpose of the meeting is.
Correct.
So I would wait until at least Wednesday of that week, so you would know. Obviously, you're going to be swearing in the new board, okay? But the other part about it is anything that had come into the clerk's office over the next two weeks or whatever it is could be added to the purpose of the special meeting.
Anything that's not old business that we've got to complete.
Right, yeah.
I think it's a compromise. Of course, I was definitely for Cummings, and I feel like with all of us trying to find a meeting and to get on board, I feel like that is a compromise. Bob, do you mind going to two places, and the staff having to be, you know, moved around is the only concern, if everybody else is...
Along those lines, Councilman, I would suggest that you, this, the date for your meeting is set for 7:00 o'clock, by the way y'all adopted the schedule at the first of this past year. And for as far as this second meeting's concerned, make sure you give enough time to this business to be done and staff that needs to go across. So maybe 8:00, the beginning of that meeting over there, 7 is the time for this one.
That seems fair, especially if the load is light that night.
Why don't we think about getting day 15?
Yeah, because I don't want to cut my speech short.
Okay.
Well, let's just replay it. How about that?
Bob, in terms of staff time, it's going to take at least 30, 40 minutes in here for the first part of this meeting, I would think. And I think realistically, you know, I don't know, I'm afraid to sit it quite frankly at 8:00 o'clock. I think probably the time should be more like 8:30, you know, because that needs to be comfortable. We're going to have a lot of people, people have to get parked and everything. If that seems amenable, I would put this in the form of a motion, that the first part of the meeting on December 2 will be devoted to wrapping up and taking care of, you know, the business, you know, conducted and authorized by the old council, and as well as, you know, approval of the minutes. And then, you know, the retirement proceeding or, you know, or ceremony would take place all at that same meeting. And upon conclusion of the, you know, taking care of the business and the ceremony regarding the, you know, retirement of the outgoing, you know, mayor and council members, then this meeting would be... this meeting would be, another meeting would be scheduled immediately thereafter at Cummings High School at 8:30 for the organizational meeting of the new council and to begin the new council and take care of the business on the agenda for that evening.
Would there be any merits, since we've got to make changes to approved council schedule anyway?
You just go ahead and make this part and just go ahead and set the date.
However, would it be any merits to moving up our council meeting a little earlier that night?
That would be easier.
Wow, I said something, gave a best teacher.
You finally had something to be full and free on it.
18 years it took.
So what time would be?
Along those lines, we can get around using the special called meeting by just turning around. You could set the date for the organizational meeting over there on that evening at whatever time you choose, and you could do that here this evening.
Would an hour be enough for you, Mayor, to make your speech?
I think I can live with it.
Let's do six.
Six o'clock, I think six o'clock. Yeah, that just, to me, that makes...
I can stay out all night.
That's a change for the schedule from the first of the year and then establishing it 7:30, 8:00, what do y'all...
7:30?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
I don't read too late.
7:30 there, okay. I think we can make that. I'm asking the doctor.
Yeah, because we do have to allow a little time here just in case there's old business that we've got to address as well. So, yeah.
So the starting time is when?
Six.
Six, okay.
You're changing the starting time from your normal seven to six o'clock that evening and then the man clerk will turn out and give you the notice out for that and then make it at eight or seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty for over Cummings.
My motion is accordingly so amended.
We have a motion to change the meeting time on December 2nd to six o'clock and the subsequent meeting at Cummings at 7:30.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thanks, everyone, for working on that and thanks, city staff in advance, because we know it's going to be a little bit of a hubbub, but we'll make it work, we'll all pitch in and make it work. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, that concludes new business. At this time, we'll move to public comments. We have one public comment this evening, Felicia MacArthur. Good evening.
Hi.
Please step forward, make yourself comfortable. Would you state your name and address for our city clerk for a minute?
Felicia MacArthur, and my address is 913 Gorrell Street in Burlington. So I'm here today requesting that the necessary work on my property be completed as soon as possible. Back in July, during Tropical Storm Chantal, there was a massive storm drain pipe that's uprooted out of my backyard. It caused major flooding to my backyard and to my home. The pipe goes through my backyard, under my neighbor's house, out to the manhole in the street. I brought this property six years ago under good faith and had no understanding of the problems that would become of it. I've been in contact with someone who's been trying to help me get this done, but essentially I need your help and approval for this work to be completed. This happened back in July and I've been patient and kind and asking and asking to be heard for repairs. I've been told I meet the scoring criteria for the project to be funded 100% as I am the sole provider for my small family and simply cannot afford a project such as this. Timely action is essential to proceed further without any more financial or personal hardships to me that I've been facing since July. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you step down, does staff need any additional information? Are we familiar?
Yes. So currently, our program is the 80/20 cost share. We've developed some criteria for scoring that could lead to fully funding certain projects, which we will need to bring to council for approval. Actually, we're aware that's a significant change in the storm drainage policy and we need council approval in order to move forward.
Have we gone as far as to have an estimate for this particular...
I do not have that information.
I will say on behalf of her account, someone called me for Saturday in reference to you. I followed up with Beverly this morning, as a matter of fact, and gave them your address and cell number for someone in the city to contact you, so.
I've been in contact with an Amy Barber.
Right.
You know, she's been helping me. She's, you know, she told me in July that, you know, I gave her as much information as I could to go to council and then we never, we haven't been to council in August, September, October, now November. I'm really just looking to get this resolved as, you know...
Understood. So...
Do you have photos?
I do.
Can I have your photo, please?
Yes.
I was unaware of this.
Don't let a apology...
So this is, this is the pipe. It goes all the way through my backyard, out under my neighbor's yard into the city. It's busted right here from all of the rain. There's a blockage that Amy told me that there's a blockage that's caused the pipe to separate and come completely out of ground.
And that's what's going to the neighbor's yard?
Yeah, it goes through my backyard neighbor's yard and then my neighbor beside me over here. It goes under her house to the road. And it rained again the next week and it come out even more. It's just a...
They are sitting there.
Yeah.
On top.
Right.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
You got it?
So if we could just gather whatever information we have from a staff perspective and maybe reach out and make contact and connect and Beverly, if you can help orchestrate that. And I think we could probably ask that we have an update provided to us and we'll see what we can do to facilitate this request. If we have to make an amendment to an existing policy, then we'll certainly take a look at that and do that. There might be some things that can be done in the interim, so we'll just look at all those options.
Okay.
But you've got our undivided attention, so thank you for being here.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Bob, since this comes from your area, going forward, how do you, do you have to budget, begin budgeting and planning for these type things? Is this something that would affect this action?
Stormwater fund, would it not be?
Yes, it's the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, so we will need to revisit the discussion about the impervious area fee equivalent residential unit, which would be assessed on all non-residential properties. And that would provide revenue so that we could expand the program to take on projects.
When we started...
One of the reasons why it took this long is we needed to develop that criteria to score these projects because there are many types of projects and we need to start from the most severe first. And then, and this one would, as I understand it, fall into that category that is proposed to fully fund.
Stormwater's become more of an issue over the last 10 years than it ever has been. And we, our enterprise fund has been enhanced. As a matter of fact, I guess we found out that the state deemed it to be an enterprise fund, so we've got to be sure that it's fully funded and that we've got the ability to do things that we need with regards to stormwater needs, which is the reason that we started the study and then the subsequent thought process of not just having everyone price the same, but based on impervious surface. And we've been in contact with those businesses to kind of forewarn them a little bit that there's some changes coming for the purpose of having enough money in the enterprise fund to handle things like this because they're expensive. And the old policy was kind of 50/50?
Yeah, originally it was 50/50.
Then we went to 80/20?
2019, 2020, it went to the 80/20 cost share.
And I do believe there needs to be a way to get 100% if necessary for those in need. So the process is not always quick enough, but certainly we can expedite it. I appreciate staff working on it behind the scenes already to get it to this point, but yeah, let's elevate that. And the stormwater change, the fee changes are necessary and they're going to be a requirement moving forward. There's just going to be nothing we can do about any of this. So, and, you know, we experienced it at Park Road and that project's been close to 18 months.
Yep.
But that, without stormwater money, we couldn't have tackled that project. So, and those are very similar. St. Cole in the road and runs under someone's house.
Right.
And honestly, a lot of these areas have got age to them in terms of the infrastructure that you can't see if you dig down and find it. It only makes sense. It was a reality to have to come to the table because none of this is going to be cheap, honestly. And Hal, I would imagine you guys are going to try to look at some kind of process in terms of trying to determine priorities based on...
Yes, that's correct.
...the situation.
Okay. All right. Good enough. Any other comments on that? Thank you for being here this evening and sharing that with us. That is the end of our public comments requested this evening, and now we'll move into council comments. There's a couple of upcoming events I do want to remind everybody of. November 22nd is the Burlington Christmas Parade downtown Burlington from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. November 29th is Christmas Tree Lighting and Small Business Saturday downtown Burlington, 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And our next city council work session is December 1st and the city council meeting is December 2nd, as we previously discussed under new business this evening. Is there any other comments from council this evening? Everybody good? I would be remiss if I didn't recognize that this evening my mother is in the audience, Julia Bradshaw. Hey, Mom, I love you. And her husband Doug is with her and I'm sure after 18 years, she said, "Maybe I'll just go see what they do." So I could have got you a video, but thank you for being here. If there's nothing else this evening, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor signify by aye. Aye. We are adjourned.